Well, we're meeting for our...
Oh, I think...
In the... Staff in the first.
...the end statement of the United States of America. Thank you to the Republic, for which the stands. My nation, under God, is with us, and the very justice for all.
Thank you. Special meeting today on October, or excuse me, October 6th, 3:00 PM in the boardroom. Before we move on, I want to read an opening statement. For COVID, which is current federal state emergency declarations in Minnesota directed to residents to stay at home. Guys about limiting person-to-person contact due to the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic. This meeting of ISD 318 School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota statutes 13D point 021. Meetings by telephone or other electronic means. Due to the health pandemic, the school board has determined that it's not feasible for the public to attend this meeting and comply with current occupancy requirements. Therefore, I am in a number of evil to attend this meeting in person, including school board members, superintendent, administrative assistant, and presenters if they choose to do so. Pursuant to Minnesota statute 13D point 021, a meeting of persons may monitor this meeting from a remote location through a live stream link provided on the main page of school district's website, www.isd318.org. All votes will be conducted by a roll call. Each school board member should wait until their name is called before voting. Persons monitoring this meeting from a remote location may submit a question or comment by contacting Julie Rasmussen at least one day in advance of the meeting. Julie's email is jrrasmussen@isd318.org, or call 218-327-5704. This information is also posted on the school district's website. This meeting is being recorded. Access to the recording will be made available at the school district's website as soon as is reasonably possible. And if we can start, before we start out into the meeting, if we can start in the boardroom here, maybe start with Matt Gorow, introduce ourselves and who we represent, and then open up the screen and have the people that are participating by the group of leads do the same.
Mayor Girl Superintendent of Schools.
Pat Bree, School Board.
Polly Spitz, School Board.
David Marty, School Board.
Mindy Guring, School Board.
Katie Sabat, Cooperburg, Southern Resources.
Jill Leelak, Cohasset Elementary Principal.
Bill Schaefer, Technology Director.
Julie Rasmussen, Administrative Assistant.
I'm Phil Pierce, Assistant.
Thank you.
And if we could go to the screen, please.
Polly Podpescer, Food and Nutrition.
Angie Berg, Assistant Principal, R.G.M.S.
Hannah Lloyd, Director of Special Services.
Clayton Linder, Assistant Principal, West Rapids Elementary.
Dan Adams, Middle School Principal.
Darren Hofstadt, Assistant Principal, Grand Rapids High School.
Jennifer Vale, Stores ICTV.
Carolyn Dean, Business Manager.
Melissa Barr, School Board.
Matt Das, Principal, Grand Rapids High School.
Ryan DeBay, East Rapids Elementary Principal.
Scott Petro, Principal at Big Fork.
Sean Martinson, Principal at West Rapids Elementary.
That's everyone.
Thank you, Julie. Moving on to our agenda. We have nothing under number two, high student achievement, nothing under three, safe and walking learning environment. Moving on to number four, effective education systems. For A of two ISD 318, return to learn plan for top 21 school year.
All right, thank you. This, uh, this plan's been put together through a great deal of work by many, many people. And I just wanted to recognize all the, the members of the, the team, the district learning leadership team that worked on this, as well as our directors from across our district, many of whom are on the, uh, call today or the, in the meeting today. What we wanted to do is put together a document that was navigable and readable and organized in a way that our community could, uh, access it, uh, describe what our plans were at this point for opening of school in the fall. It isn't intended to answer every single question that could possibly exist. The document would need to be a lot longer and it would change tomorrow. But as of today, um, on August 6th here, it's based on the information that we have from our county. And it comes back to the model of education, really ultimately, the model of education that we're intending to start school with. So, um, kind of moving through this, it starts with a message for myself. I think, uh, the idea or the notion that our community is going to be, uh, going to play an important role in what our school looks like in the fall, uh, from a prevention standpoint. And by, uh, ensuring that kids can be in school by exhibiting and practicing those preventative measures is important. And just the fact that we take our roles seriously in schools. I, as superintendent personally, uh, take my job very seriously because of what's at stake, and that's the education of our children. And, uh, we take it very seriously that parents in our community trust their children with us. We especially take that seriously this year. There were some guiding principles that were, uh, themes that emerged in our work together as a planning committee, and the first one had to do with safety. And I think it's important that as a school community, we are clear when we're talking about safety, that we're really incorporating the safety of a whole child. There is a lot of really well-intentioned and important conversation about safety related to COVID-19. And we know that's important and that we need to address that. But we also know that, uh, the safety of a child has to do with their physical health, their mental health, their emotional health, uh, all those pieces, uh, food security, what kind of care they're receiving when they're not with us. All those are components of safety that we take seriously that need to be part of our plan. Equity is very important to us. Uh, all children believe, or all children deserve the same access to high-quality education. The distance learning that we all moved to in the spring had the potential to amplify disparities. And we want to make sure that whatever we do this fall, um, creates equity. Third, educational quality, our, our team that came out loud and clear that that was important to us and as a school district. And we believe that that interaction between that student and positive adults at school, whether that's a classroom teacher, or support staff, or a bus driver, is really, really important. And so we wanted that interaction to be regular. We wanted that to be consistent, frequent. So that's really behind a great deal of our decision-making. And then also, fourth, community, that whatever we do as a school district, we know it impacts our community in many, many ways. It impacts our community's, um, employment. It, it impacts our, our community's ability to care for children if they're not in school. Um, it impacts our community, so we need to always keep that in mind. Moving into the next slide, decision-making guidelines. When we think about the model of school that we're going to be starting with, our base model, these are the decision-making guidelines that we'll be using. And, uh, as a school district, we feel strongly that it's important that we use the data and science. And, uh, we had an opportunity to hear today on our Itasca County Press Conference from a local physician, uh, science behind COVID-19. And, uh, I was really grateful last Thursday when the governor laid out a plan that was based on science, was based on data, and that we were able to use our local information to make the decisions around what school looks like here. That enables us to not only take a statewide or a county-wide, but also even more local than that to our communities that our schools are in. We know that safety is important, and so we prioritize that for students and staff. Again, item number three, the conversation around the table, recognize that in-person learning is really important, especially for our younger learners. They're experiencing foundational, uh, experiences or, or learning there that really happen best when there's an interaction between the teacher and, uh, support staff and those children. Stakeholder input is important. We've had the, uh, opportunity already to have some initial conversations with local healthcare, public health, about our decisions moving forward regarding our model. And they're, uh, committed to be involved in that, those shifts as we move forward. And, uh, we know that that's, uh, it's possible and likely that we may need to revisit this continuously. And then five, again, tied back to that community piece, that our decisions are going to impact many, many people, our children, our community, our staff, families. And so that has to be a part of our consideration as we weigh the data in the future. We chose to organize our return to learn plan in four areas, operations, um, kind of that tactical or logistical piece, instruction, what happens in the classroom, support services, and then, uh, program, programs, activities, and events. And I guess feel free, board members, if you want to stop me at any time, I will, I hope you can answer some questions at the end, but if you have questions along the way, uh, just interrupt me because I'll get out of roll here, so. All right, so starting with, uh, that operations component, screening is what happens when we first encounter, uh, our, uh, children and adults. Part of this has to do with the cooperation when we're talking about children, that we're cooperating with their parents. And so there's a, there's an understanding when parents send their children here that they are complicit in the idea that their children are not exhibiting symptoms. And so, um, that chart on the right-hand side is something that, that we have on our website. And, um, but it lays out some of those screening criteria. Uh, so we'll, we'll be looking for that if we see a child on a bus, when we see a child get to school or in class, and sort of moving through a tiered approach where if we identify symptoms that we refer that child to the nurse, the nurse can take that next level of screening and, um, and go from there. We did order a great deal, uh, a large number of thermometers, so we have the ability to take the temperature of, of, uh, of students. We have about 4,300 kids in our district. We do have the ability to take the temperature of a large, large number of students in a short period of time. And that may be something that we do, uh, if it's necessary to do that mass temperature check. Second item on screening just sort of summarizes that, and it's another look at that screening criteria. And, you know, we know that the common cold is going to be a challenging, uh, create some challenges for us because some of the symptoms of that common cold overlap. And, uh, again, we'll be relying on our health professionals to help guide us through that and, um, work through that screening process. One of the questions we get often is what happens if there's a COVID case in a school? And so there is a process, both internally and externally, in terms of our, our nurses, our district-level nurses, uh, building and district administration. One of the things that also came out of the executive order and the plans from the governor a week ago was the establishment of regional support centers and so on. In terms of education, that is going to funnel through our service cooperatives. In our case, the Northeast Service Co-op will have somebody on staff whose job is, uh, exclusively or primarily to respond to COVID situations in its member schools. So they will assist the school district. If we do have a case, we report that to that, uh, individual, and, uh, they'll help guide the process back in the school district. There'll be guidance that we get from our local public health, obviously. We'll do some response logistically with cleaning and, and taking care of that. We'll message out to families that there's been a case, but we're going to be very, very careful about, um, positively or even inferring identification, protecting that personal identity of that individual that tested positive. One of the other things that came through the, uh, the governor's message last Thursday was that, uh, the education sphere, if you will, is going to be given priority when it comes to, uh, testing and response. It's important to, I think, to know too, that, uh, this has been confirmed and reaffirmed a number of times with the, uh, education leaders at the state, that it won't necessarily mean if we have a case that we close down a school or close down the district. That's going to be based on that individual circumstance, the amount of close contacts there were, the amount of, uh, kind of the density of time, or the amount of time that individual might have been in a particular place. And so it won't necessarily mean that a school was shut down. It could, but it won't necessarily mean that.
Matt, the question, just thinking of Big Fork and as an attached school, we have junior, senior high on one end, we have the elementary on the other end, would that be treated in different? As separate schools, even though it's under...
I think that it, it very much could be. Uh, I think that if there was a case that was in the junior, senior high area, um, and we could identify that, uh, that was isolated to that area, we could react differently at the high school component of that building than the elementary. And, you know, with a district our size, we could be in a situation where, um, Big Fork might be in a different situation altogether than our schools in town. We could be in a situation where if we had an outbreak at an individual school that we didn't believe created any cross, you know, contamination, that we could be in a different model in a particular school for a short period of time in the rest of the district. So, um, there's going to be a lot of fluidity. And I think we can reinforce and reinforce and reinforce that a lot of that, a lot of that comes down to community spread. We're at a spot now in our, in our county where, uh, the Kelly Chandler, the public health nurse shared to get today, that our spread now is community spread when it happens. And so our community really ends up being in control of its destiny to some degree as it relates to our children being in school. All right, um, I mentioned that we'll be communicating out, uh, to families if we do have a case and, um, working through that cleaning component. This chart here does a good job of summarizing, again, our response. Face coverings or masks, uh, this is probably one of the items that I get asked the most about. And, uh, the reality is that the executive order is very, very clear about where face coverings are required and, uh, the areas in which there might be exceptions. There's exemptions around eating or drinking, there's exemptions around situations like right now when I'm talking, there's exemptions around strenuous activity, so that could be FIAID if the FIAID class was strenuous. But there are cases where if it isn't, the, the mask might still be on. Social distancing, we're going to continue to do that as much as we, is feasible. There are a variety of different face coverings that are possible. Again, this language comes right from guidance that we've received from, uh, the Minnesota Department of Health. Uh, there are also some medical and developmental or behavioral exemptions. And we're working through that process with our healthcare, um, experts locally to, to determine exactly what that, uh, huggles are determined. Some of them will be determined by individual, uh, education plans. And so a student on an IEP might have an exemption there because of that. Key thing that will be important here is that we're acting with continuity across our buildings and our district. And so, uh, how our response, you know, how we respond will be, uh, consistent.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Um, no mention of face shields, and I know masks are mandated by the state, but, um, do you have any thoughts on face shields or where they might come into play?
You bet. So the, uh, we just got another bit of guidance yesterday on, on, uh, coverings. We've ordered enough face shields for our entire staff, and the state will also be providing face shields. There are situations, especially, um, in the learning environment where that, or the, the visual is really important. And so that exemption is out there too, potentially for our staff. So we do have face shields in place, we will be handing those out, and there will definitely be situations where those are a longer urge. One of the things that happened last Thursday as well in the governor's announcement was that in addition to the, uh, face coverings and masks that we ordered early as a school district so we could be prepared, um, we'll be getting some face coverings, both, uh, for, uh, in the form of masks and shields from the state. And so Julie submitted our numbers, uh, that, um, recently so that we can get that taken care of. Those will be delivered to the service co-op as a hub. But we, uh, will be receiving masks for, uh, cloth masks for students, some paper masks for students, and then masks for our staff as well. We are required as a school district to provide a mask for students, so we will do that. And we have enough, uh, in stock to do that. We are, you know, asking to be a part of any type of, uh, drives, or asking parents even if they're able to, to provide them for their children, just so that we can make sure that, that those masks go as far as we possibly can. We also are looking into the possibility of, um, industrial washing machines that will be able to sanitize our masks in the evening. We have some of that equipment in a couple of our buildings and looking at expanding our ability to do that. Other things in that day-to-day operations piece, um, individual school supplies will be, you know, that, that's where we're going to be, uh, really reinforcing. And if there are some things that could share, uh, cleaning or sanitizing there. Uh, one of the questions that I just had today, again, was addressed at the bottom, visitors and volunteers. Obviously, we're going to be asking that that self-screening happens, but anybody that's not essential to the school, we're just not going to let into our school buildings at this point. It just introduces a variable that, uh, we, we'd not like to introduce into our, our system. Okay, in terms of physical space, uh, one of the things that our principals, I know, have been thinking a lot about is classroom furniture. And so that needs to be arranged in a way that maximizes physical distancing. And we're also looking into getting some plexiglass barriers ordered for classroom setting. We do have those established in a number of our buildings already, in office situations, and those will be continually, uh, installed here as we move closer to the schools starting. Our principals are also, uh, looking at, um, hallway traffic. And in our preliminary schedules, passing times are increased just to reduce the density in the hallways. Our, our building's drums department has been, uh, working with our health and safety consultants to identify the appropriate chemicals to use so that they're safe, but that they also are effective in COVID-19, uh, cleaning and sanitization. And so that's been ordered and taken care of. And you can see some other plans there as it relates to cleaning. Uh, one of the things that we will be focusing on is the high-touch and high-traffic areas. If there was a, there happened to be a COVID case, there would obviously be a deeper, a deeper clean there. We have purchased some additional equipment, uh, to aid in the cleaning and disinfecting of our schools, uh, and our buses actually. And we'll be making some modifications to our, uh, heating and ventilation system so that they're actually running, uh, negative air, so we're pulling air into the building more than we typically would. That increases fresh air, it's going to increase heat costs, but it's going to increase our ability to have more fresh air in our buildings. So we'll be, uh, making that change to our HVAC systems as well. Uh, student transportation also will be adjusted, and, and these adjustments, uh, you know, we're, we're moving towards, as we get through this, towards our, our base model being in-person for all students. But as you can see, in-person, uh, does not mean business as usual. There's adjustments that we'll be making, even though we may have many of our children back or most of our children back, there are going to be adjustments that we're making, changes we're making to how we operate, no matter what. Our drivers will be trained, will, they'll be required to wear masks, everybody on those buses will be, um, there are some cleaning and sanitization changes in the transportation system as well. Hand sanitizers have been ordered and will be installed on our buses. And so, uh, uh, big changes there as well. School meals will change, and Polly I know is on the call, but, uh, you know, in the past, there were more options for students to, uh, self-serve. And so service and plating will be done by our food nutrition staff. And many self-contained items will take the place of, of, uh, you know, what we typically see in a school menu. I know Polly's been identifying, you know, ensuring our nutrition guidelines continue to be met so that we can maximize our reimbursement there too. Changes around traffic flow, trains, changes around, um, precautions in and around the lunch space and distancing, our, uh, Polly's been meeting with our principals about lunchroom scenario. There will be some places where lunches are going to be eaten in classrooms if we're not able to house those, uh, students in the typical cafeteria environment. So that could be a change that we see as well. August, we're going to be doing, uh, a number of, uh, trainings for all of our staff. On the education side of things, taking a look at what our new environment looks like. Um, our P, we have a PD team that's been meeting, they've developed modules around, uh, components that our teachers need to be ready for the fall. I heard, um, Hannah Lloyd today talking about training with our air professional staff. And, um, again, I mentioned in the transportation system section, uh, things that the bus drivers will be doing differently as well. All right, the, uh, plan that we'll be publishing also has information about our, the learning model selection. So, um, we're going to be continually monitoring the, the county case rate, uh, per 14,000. As I've indicated, our, our current data puts us in the in-person level for elementary and middle and high school. And, well, that can change. And, uh, it's entirely based on the, uh, number of cases, and so we'll be monitoring that. What I'm trying to do is create a calendar that, that, uh, uh, that creates some predictability for our families, so they know when we're going to be reviewing that data, and they can have some predictability so they can make adjustments that their family needs to make. With the caveat that if there's a spike or a increase that we need to respond to quickly, we can do that. Our plan then goes through the three types of models that we were asked to prepare for, the in-person, the hybrid, and the distance learning. In the in-person model, we'll be looking at a, a schedule that's very, very similar to our typical school schedule, um, increasing time in there for hygiene and, and, uh, breaks and those types of things. We'll also be intentionally taking time to teach about school safety, about those items so that our, our suits are prepared and ready. And, uh, also we'll be intentionally talking about how to be prepared if we need shift to a hybrid model or to a different, uh, different model like distance learning. So, um, that's another reason why I'm grateful that at this point we're able to open in-person because it will give us the option, or opportunity rather, to teach our students on the front end what hybrid might look like, or what, uh, distance learning might look like. In addition to building those really, really important relationships with children and families. Like I said, in-person doesn't mean learning as you, or business as usual. There'll be many, many risk mitigation, uh, strategies deployed that are, as described in here. And, um, in the in-person model, six feet of social distancing is not a requirement. But we know and we have a vested interest in doing a good job of distancing as much as we can because the more precautions we take, the more likely it is we'll be able to keep students in school. We have great outdoor space, um, and so we'll use that for recess whenever possible. Uh, that's, uh, obviously the, the most, uh, the most safe way to do recess is outside, so we're going to take advantage of that. All right. Distance learning is what we, uh, we're calling Connect Ed, your three... Distance learning is what we're calling Connect Ed or 318 Connect Ed. The term distance learning wore out its welcome this last spring. And so we're rebranding that to 318 Connect Ed. And I think it's well, we're well positioned to do that because it is going to look different. It's going to feel different. One of the things we heard in our district and we heard from the state data as well as across the country, concerns from parents around motivation, concerns from parents around structure and too much, too little work. So we've taken that feedback to inform our work around our distance learning plan. It's important that our parents remember, and the reason why it's in here, that if parents choose to not send their students to school in person, we have a remote learning option for them. So if I'm, if I was a parent that wasn't comfortable sending my child, I don't have to enroll them in an online school from somewhere else. Our local teachers who know our community best, know our children the best, are able to offer instruction to our, our local students. We have consolidated learning platforms, that was one of the changes. It's a real kind of practical one that we made. So all of our elementary will be using Seesaw as a learning platform. In middle and high school, we'll be using Schoology. Districts everywhere shifted to this distance learning model this spring. People just used what they knew to make something work because they had to turn it around so fast. We're able to be more intentional heading into this fall. And obviously, since we're going to unify on that, that's part of our learning modules that we're creating for our professional goal. One of the other things that I think is important to note about the change or shift here is has to do with structure. So having a more structured schedule when students are at home learning has been identified to be important, both through learning and also from the management side at home. So that'll be a part of the distance learning model moving forward. Is that schedule is established, there is some flexibility there. But there is a schedule that our students will be able to get used to and build those routines that we know are important, especially for our local students. And the hybrid is the third model or the final one in our plan. It's the most challenging one because it's something we haven't done before. It's important and I try to reinforce this whenever I can that the hybrid, the schedule in a hybrid model is driven by capacity and it's driven by our ability to meet social distancing. Schedule in a hybrid learning model isn't the driver. So the first thing that we have to do in a hybrid learning model is take a look at the capacity limits. So one of the requirements in a hybrid model is that we examine our classroom spaces, determine how many children or people can occupy that space. In the case of, you know, from the fire code perspective, the number that we use is 40 square feet per person. That's, that's what gives us that 50% of capacity. It's not the same as enrollment, it's not the same as class size. It's about how many square feet are in that, in that room. Using that number as an example, a 900-square-foot classroom can have about 23 people in it. So that's the first requirement is capacity. Second requirement is six feet social distancing is a requirement. And so if we're able to meet those two space and capacity requirements, we're able to have more children in the building. That's been our goal and priority from the beginning, have as many kids as we can back. In our environment and our schools, we have the ability to eat, to meet capacity and social distancing guidelines more easily than our elementaries. I'm not saying easy, but more easily in our elementaries, especially our, our new buildings where extra space was built in. At the middle and the high school, we don't have the same luxury with space there. Class sizes are larger. And so again, if we're not able to meet building or room capacity and spacing guidelines, we have to adjust the schedule. So if we move to a hybrid learning model at the middle or high school, we will be rotating students in three, two groups, an A group and a B group that will attend school on alternating days. We'll be able to continue with the seven-period day there. That'll help us with continuity. That's what our students are used to, our curriculum and our teaching is set up to do that. And so they'll just do those on alternating days and teachers will provide work for those students that aren't attending in school. All right, next, special education. Obviously, the special education process is very, very important. And it's very, very important that we follow through with the requirements of individual education plans. And that's, that's been, you know, you can see that baked into these two descriptions here of onsite or hybrid. Families are a key driver in that process. And we can collaborate with them about what is important and what's necessary for each of those individual kids is key. So you can see the process here with working through those IP goals, contingency learning plans, which is part of the shift to hybrid or remote. Ensuring that we're meeting those federal requirements of those plans. Attendance was something that was unique this spring. Starting in in-person learning, we're able to monitor that, you know, with the students that are there, taking hourly and daily attendance. If with students that aren't there, that attendance will be a function of daily or hourly interactions. It'll be a function of work completion, it'll be a function of engagement. And if students are not engaging in in-person learning, we have, you know, through our relationship with Ross Resources and tritzy prevention specialists, we can work with their staff on helping kids get back to school or engage. And the same thing really is true if a student is remote. One of the things that's challenging about distance learning and every district had to sort of respond to students that went dark and that we quit hearing from. And so some of that we can work with our Ross Resources TPS staff on. And some of it will, they require physical trips to make sure we can get eyeballs on children that aren't engaging for whatever reason. We've had a number of discussions about grading. I'd say this is the thing that we just spent some more time on today. The Minnesota Department of Education indicated that they were going to release some guides in July. We haven't seen that yet. And I asked the commissioner on a call this morning, she was going to check on that. But, you know, grades are an important part of the, of the reporting process, obviously. It's an important part of the feedback process. And it's an important part, especially as students move through high school, credit earning, transcripts, college. So we want to have a grading, a grading system that represents rigor, that represents, you know, transparency, that it creates systems where when students leave Grand Rapids and Big Four high schools and they're able to transition to secondary or post-secondary education seamlessly and well. And so there needs to be integrity in that process as well. So that's where we are at this point. But I think you can, in general, grading is going to reflect the learning that's happened, traditional practices with daily work assignments and assessments, both at K5 and 612. All right, instructional resources. One of the roles that our instructional technology staff plays is ensuring that our students have the devices that they need to engage both with the in-person, but especially the hybrid and the remote learning option, 318 Connect Ed, troubleshooting. And, you know, we learned a lot as a state about broadband last spring and who had internet and who didn't. And I think that's been helpful for the narrative in our state. But it'll be our instructional technology department's role, getting people connected, helping families find resources to sign up for internet if they don't or providing district hotspots like we did this last spring. Piece in there about teacher-family communication, we know that's key to working, especially in a remote model, so that we have continuity of education there. Something that came up in today's press conference with the county had to do with supports for students. And again, getting back to this disengagement, one of the things that I think reinforces the idea that staying connected with our school district is a really, really good choice for our families is because we have school counseling staff, we have school social workers, we have mental health supports and relationships with people that can respond in crisis. Those resources aren't available in every case with other online providers. We know our children, we have resources here. And so those will be in place whether students in, in person or online. School age care is a requirement moving forward, just like it was last spring for children who are, whose parents are critical workers. And so if we move to a remote or a hybrid model, we are required to provide that care. And only for a remote or a hybrid. And you can see some of the precautions here that we would take that'd be similar and driven by what we see for coming out of the Minnesota Department of Health for out-of-school time and the summer program. Activities and athletics, there was an announcement made this week about fall sports. That was very important to many people, we have a lot of questions about that. Shortened seasons for a number of the sports, football and volleyball shifted to mid-March to mid-May season. There's some practices that we have the ability to hold this fall. We're still talking about, you know, what's, what's best for students, what's best for the students as they participate and making sure that they're having a breadth of experiences and not being overwhelmed. So just trying to make some wise decisions for students there. One of the other things that I wanted to make sure that was in our plan is that the transfer rules in Minnesota are very strict. And if transfers happen from a school to a non-resident school district, eligibility issues arise very, very quickly and the consequences are pretty severe. So students enrolling in a, in an online school, that's considered a transfer. And eligibility will be affected there. So it's really important that our parents understand the consequences of those decisions if they choose to do that, even if they live here, even if they re-enroll here, that transfer will affect eligibility. Mask requirement comes in to play here potentially, so we're working, we're working on staying up to date on that as well. Melanie DeBake did a good job working through the community education part of this, part of this. We want to be able to have opportunities, but we also want to be able to get to mitigate risks. That's the, everything we're doing in here is about mitigating risks. So if we're, they, Melanie and a number of other of our staff took a look at how we could do this to restrict movement, restrict spaces in our building so that we didn't have to worry about where people were, having to clean an entire building if we know the classroom in the, in the area. So restricting, restricting the number of people, restricting the number of classes and restricting where they can be so that we can stay on top of that cleaning. If we shift to out of in-person, that's going to affect our ability to offer community education. So those classes could be canceled at any time if our instructional model changes. All right, finally, last, large events. We, no large events, this is coming out of the guides from the Department of Health. No large events can take place in the buildings. And so we have to have those restrictions there. And outdoor events, on the other hand, can be offered with masked participants and physical distancing. We start talking about a district our size and the potential for large numbers of people. One of the things that I think the governor talked about earlier this spring was the ability for us to predict the number of people that might be attending. So if we had a gigantic community-wide event, it invited everybody to noble hall field, that would be an unpredictable number of people and it might affect our ability to distance there. So I know that we're looking at some of our activities, ways to set up groups that we know will be smaller and that we know will be able to distance and meet those guidelines and mitigate risk as much as possible. The other thing we included in our plan is that we're going to hold off on field trips. Again, just limiting exposure, mitigating risk. This isn't the time to take chances on things like that. All right, before I take questions, again, I just want to recognize all the work that went into this by both, you know, our communications staff and the planning group, our district learning leadership team made up of teachers and principals, our directors and all the work that went into this. I'm really proud of, proud of our team. Questions? Any questions from that?
So on the hybrid model in the elementary schools, you're anticipating that all the kids still leave school every day?
Right, so one of the things that we'll be doing as we roll this plan out, and I didn't mention it, so thanks for bringing this up. One of the things we'll be doing as we roll this plan out will be a signup or a registration for parents and their students. So we offered a general questionnaire earlier that gave us a kind of a big picture idea of where people were at, how they were feeling. Our next piece of data that we're going to be asking for is going to be very, very specific. So if I'm a parent with three kids, I will go in and essentially register each one of those three kids for my, the choice that I'm making. I will identify, yes, my third grader will be in-person, my fifth grader will be at home, my 12th grader will be in-person, submit that data. That will give us a much, much tighter idea about how many students will actually physically be there. And once we know how many kids are physically there, that'll inform that hybrid decision. I think that in many cases, we're right on that, right on that boundary of being able to do that because of how many kids, if they all came, it would be tough. We know that there'll be some staying at home. Once we know how many students are staying at home, we'll be able to more accurately identify whether we can have all kids here or hybrid. But we know at the middle and high school, we could.
That question can address the plans itself and thinking about the parents and what options they might have. As we sit today, we know we're going to be bringing all our students back. With that in mind, what are the options for the parents? We know we're bringing all of the kids back. The options, as I see it, is they can still do distance learning or 318.
Yep.
As well as come back into school. Hybrid won't happen unless the requirements fall under the rest of the year.
Yeah, that's, that's right. So there's really a blend, there is really going to be a blend happening no matter what model we identify. Because parents have the ability, like I said, next week, they're going to make a choice if they want to send their child to school or they want to keep them home. So we know right out of the gate, we're going to have many, many children here, we're going to have some children home. That's, that will be parents' choice at this point. If we shift to a hybrid, again, if the, the number of children at home is adequate or enough, we might be able to keep our, our in-person looking very, very similar. So those are the choices. And along with those choices, as we've talked through that and what those choices could look like and what options parents have, moving from a, if I started the year as a parent and my, you know, my spouse became ill and I needed to protect my family and I chose to bring my student from an in-person to at-home, we're going to give parents the ability and option to do that anytime, to move their child from in-person to home. The opposite of that is not going to be true. So if a parent chooses the beginning of the year to have their student be at home, they can request a move to in-person at the end of the quarter. Because all these decisions, like I said, about planning, schedule, staff, lunches, all those things are based on that decision that they make on the front end and adjusting to that and bringing a kid back could put us over a capacity limit if we were in a hybrid. So they'll, once they make that decision to be at home, they'll have to wait till the end of the quarter to make a shift.
I appreciate the fact that families have options to, to them. The other is I want to commend you and the staff. Another comment and question, there's a possibility that we should be in all three of these at one time.
Yep, so we know that right out of the gate, we're going to be in-person and we're going to have, we're going to have kids essentially doing distance learning or 318 Connect Ed. We're going to have that for sure. We're going to have that for sure. If our case numbers in the county get to about 90 or 91, the, or actually, if they get to 40 first, our high school, middle school will go to a hybrid model. At that point, we would have elementary in-person, middle high school doing hybrid, and we'd have a group that was doing 318 Connect Ed from the very beginning. So we'll have kids theoretically in all three models.
Any other questions?
I just have a question regarding the numbers and the equation that we have. So task account is large.
Yep.
Let's say cases go up above 20 in this formula, but they're not necessarily in our district. Do we have a choice to continue in-person or is it that's up to us?
Yes. Yes, that's a good question. So one of the things that I'm working on right now is assembling a team of people with district staff and partners in our community so that when we are looking at this data, that we are taking into account all the nuances that might exist in that data. So if there's a, you know, if our county data is influenced by a big, huge outbreak in an isolated area of our county, we could take that into consideration as we either move out of or don't move out of or delay the moving out of or in or out of a model.
Again, I'd like to echo what Matt has indicated. Congratulations to the district learning leadership team and to all the people that put this together. There's obviously an incredible amount of thoughtful work that's gone into it. And of course, we generate some like questions. How nimble are we as a district if we make the realization that we need to move from an in-person program to a
Yeah. So one of the things that the governor talked about is he, he wants us to be able to shift quickly if we can. And one of the provisions that he's given us is that we could have a day, like if there was a really emergent spike that was sort of, you know, an emergency, I guess. He's given us the authority to have a day, a planning day in between these two models. So if we were in this in-person and there was a big giant outbreak because of something in a school or an area, and it caused us to say, okay, we'd rather give you a two-week heads-up, can't do that now, we got to make a change now. We can have a day in between, almost like a snow day, essentially. We can count those hours towards our instructional hour total and then come back that next day in a shifted model. So it could need to be as fast as two days. We know that would be the hardest situation for our community to respond to, but if we end up in that spot, you know, we have to get prepared for it.
My question, kind of spinning off of Molly, it was a spirit of the number of buildings we have.
It's theoretically possible that we could have, you know, Easton one model and Weston on the model and Cohasset in a different model. At some point, at some point, we have to ask ourselves questions about continuity and making sure that our children's experiences are equitable, making sure that our staffing sort of requirements are equitable. So that will have to, that would have to come into play too, because at some point, you're creating different experiences across our district just based on where our person might live. And we want to keep that in mind too as we're weighing those decisions out.
So I know we're going to do a resolution and adopt this plan. What's the next step?
So the next step, the next steps after this plan, we'll be communicating this out to staff, and then we'll be getting this out to our public. Our families will have a chance to review this. They'll have a chance to give feedback on it through thought exchange, and they'll be asked to do this registration. That'll all happen in the next couple business days that'll all be going out. And, you know, I think I can't, probably can't say enough, we're, we are communicating right now on August 6th, based on our current, the most current data we have, we're in in-person for all students. September 8th is still over a month away. And I hope that our numbers go down, and so we don't have to worry about it. But there will be a point, there will be kind of like a drop dead date where we're like, okay, this is how we're starting, September 8th. And, you know, we're looking, again, looking at that calendar, wanting to make sure we give enough lead time to people where we'll communicate that, you know, there's no more gray area. We won't be saying, based on what we know now, this is what we're going to do. We'll be saying, this is what we're doing on September 8th. So parents and families can plan on that. And if we have to shift out of that after a week or after two weeks, then we'll do that. But people need to know what September 8th is going to be.
I just have one more comment. I mean, it's one of your first guiding principles and one of the first things you said, and it's regarding the safety. You know, the media and the fear is about taking kids safe and hopeful, but really it's about the whole child. And I love how you said that, it's the mental health, it's the whole emotional, which being in school a lot of times is where they need to be in order to be safe in that and that area.
Just going to add on to that, is the scene they're going to come back in person, the difficult part is what you put in this document. And I guess if there's one thing that I'd like to see the public really understand is what's in this document and the purpose of what's in this document in regards to the safety of kids. It's not just saying that the government's saying kids can come back to school. It's all the work that you put into this plan. And I think sometimes that gets lost in the public. It's not just saying kids can't go back to school. We're an unprecedented agency, and it's unprecedented solutions. It's not common everyday routine. And again, and then lathering, get this out to the public, really have a chance to, but the detail of it, the parts of ensuring everybody's safety. We have a resolution. Molly, do you want to read the resolution?
Speak up. Speak up, okay.
Yes.
Resolution, adoption of ISD 318 Return to Learn Plan for the 2020-2021 school year and other COVID-19 related matters. Whereas Minnesota Statute Section 123b.09 vests the care, management, and control independent districts in the school board. And whereas the superintendent of independent school district number 318 herein after the superintendent is responsible for the management of the schools, administration of all school district policies, and is directly accountable to the school board. And whereas when responsibilities are not specifically prescribed nor school district policy applicable, the superintendent shall use personal and professional judgment subject to review by the school board pursuant to the school district policy 302, superintendent. Whereas on March 13th, 2020, Minnesota Governor Tim Walz issued an emergency executive order 20-01, which declared a peacetime emergency in Minnesota in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas on July 30th, 2020, Minnesota Governor Tim Walz issued an emergency executive order 20-82 in the Safe and Learning Plan for 2020-2021, the Safe Learning Plan, which set forth five learning models: in-person learning for all, in-person learning for elementary students, and hybrid learning for secondary students, hybrid learning for all students, hybrid learning for elementary students, and distance learning for secondary students and distance learning. And authorize all school districts in the state of Minnesota to select and implement an appropriate-based learning model in accordance with and subject to the Safe Learning Plan. And whereas the Minnesota Department of Education has issued and may continue to issue written guidance for Minnesota schools on educational issues related to COVID-19. And whereas the Minnesota Department of Health has issued and may continue to issue written guidance for Minnesota schools on public health issues related to COVID-19. And whereas the superintendent and the administration of the school district have conferred with the school board regarding the available learning models, the current MDE and MDH requirements for each, and other relevant information. And whereas based upon the collective consideration of these factors, the superintendent has recommended to the school board that ISD 318 Return to Learn Plan with a base learning model of in-person learning for all students in grades K through 12 be implemented at the commencement of the 2020-2021 school year. Now therefore, be resolved by the school board of independent school district number 318 as follows. Section 1, the superintendent is hereby directed to implement the following base learning model to open the 2020-2021 school year in-person learning for all students in grades K-12. Section 2, the superintendent is hereby authorized after consultation with the school board chair and notification to the school board to select and implement a different learning model for the school district or any specific school buildings without school board action if the superintendent reasonably believes that prompt implementation of a different learning model is necessary and that constraints of time and public health considers it rather impractical to hold a school board meeting to approve the implementation. The learning model selected and implemented by the superintendent shall continually affect unless and until the school board consultation with the superintendent and appropriate school district staff and public health official. The show deems it in the best interest of the school district and its students to implement a different learning model. Section 3, the superintendent will provide regular updates to the school board regarding the school district's efforts to implement COVID-19-related education on public health guidance issued by the MDE and the MDH respectively.
Thank you, Molly. That was a resolution. We need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Moved by David. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Mindy. Any discussion? Mary Don, Julie, would you like that, please?
I sure will. Pat Dury?
Yes.
Molly Miskovich?
Yes.
Mindy Nuring?
Yes.
Melissa Barr?
Yes.
And David Marty?
David Marty says yes.
Thank you.
And I should note that Board Member Susan was absolutely noticed. I forgot to mention that at the beginning of the meeting. Thank you. Moving on to 4B, it's approved of revised ISD 318 2020-2021 school calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Included in your pack, it's a copy of an adjusted or amended school calendar for the 2021 school year. Our school calendars are generally adopted in the late winter type timeframe. After some discussion and consideration about this fall, the uniqueness that we're in, there was an opportunity here to make a change that enabled us to have an additional teacher workshop day prior to the start of school. IASK had decided early on that multi-district day, which was scheduled for October 19th, that we wouldn't hold that this year just because of the situation that we're in. And so that had been scheduled, the 19th was scheduled as a non-student day, but a teacher day. And so we are proposing that we flip that day from the 19th of October to September 1st. Again, the benefit there is that it gives our teachers an additional day for school starts to address classroom issues or training. We have new school buildings and remodeled school buildings we're opening. And had a discussion with union leadership about that. They were very, very much supportive of that idea. And so it just seems like a really, a really good thing to do that makes sense for our teachers and our school district to get started.
Thank you, Matt. We need a motion to adopt the revised schedule for 2021, 2020-2021. Moved by Molly. Is there a second?
Second.
Melissa.
Will you roll call, please?
Matt, does this schedule line up with the IASK schedule now?
So the student days won't be any different than they were before. So in the grand scheme of things, I think that our, this current calendar is within a day, at the most, two days different, just depending on how many student days other districts have in their contract. It's very, very close. As far as teacher days, there are a number of school districts, because we have varying degrees of contact or contract days, some districts had three days of workshop days typically. Grand Rapids hasn't, just because our contract days are different. So I think we align with, we align with more on the teacher side of things. The student side of things will be the same.
Thank you.
Molly Miskovich?
Yes.
Mindy Nuring?
Yes.
Melissa Barr?
Yes.
David Marty?
Yes.
Pat Dury?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to partnerships. Nothing listed, other business? Is there any other business to come before the party? Mary Don, we stand adjourned. Thank you all.